Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session of the Mayor and Council with the Berlin Fire Company and Berlin Fire Company EMS. It's December 20th, 2023. For those following along at home, we're going to begin with the Berlin Fire Company, and then at 7:30, we'll go ahead and switch over to the EMS. So we'll turn over the floor to President Fitzgerald and Chief RJ Root.
Okay. Just want to reaffirm, we said it a couple of times, but we've heard a couple of other comments that the town doesn't know, they have flat 24, 25 budget. So we will reaffirm that, you know, our request will be the $200,000 for operating and the $150,000 for capital. Where that stems from is historical information from our operating cost, from this study, from the audits that the town used to do. Those are numbers that sufficiently fund the fire company to provide the fire and rescue protection for the town of Berlin, as well as the outstanding areas for what comes from the county. So, you know, historically, I think we gave you the charts last time. I didn't reprint them again of what the town has funded in the past, and in the past, they have funded, you know, for the capital, different apparatus at different times. I think last time, there was like 120, 20,000 for a couple of years. We got away from that, and that's... So we just want to reaffirm those numbers. That will be the ask. It's been approved by the company. We reviewed that, and they're comfortable with that. So when that contract comes, that's what it's going to say.
David, the money we allocated this year, how much did you allocate to fire?
So, well, what you allocated us was $200,000 for operating, and you allocated the $136,000 change to capital.
Out of the four, 65 minutes.
137, you said?
No. The contract, I think I did bring the contract in. So what the contract this year was for $200,000 in operating, yep.
So you met that goal.
You met that goal.
You met that.
Correct. And then we had the American Rescue Funds, which you all made some adjustments, but the balance of 136 is the capital.
So, but this year in the contract, the amount that was funded that you have currently to date is $200,000 for fire?
That's been distributed. Right. That's correct. There's a balance due. The contract says that we had to make a request, and we made the request for the ARPA.
That was really important.
For our funds.
We understand.
Yep. So yes, this year, you were very, very close. What, 150 minus 36, a minute, $14,000?
Well, that's still a pending item before the council, just so that we're all clear. The funds for ARPA are earmarked for the fire company in the contract, but the dispersment has not been approved.
You've not dispersed them. The contract says they'll be dispersed, but you're correct, they've not been dispersed.
Correct.
Because it hasn't been approved.
Correct.
So since we know, well, apparently, the number for the fire side, and we're going to get kind of a jumpstart, so we're not going back and forth.
That's why I've been telling you for months.
Can we get the draft contract from your side to us?
Sure. The same contract, just the new numbers. Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, I'm just trying to get ahead of a budget game here.
All right. So then let's move to agenda item number two, which is capital apparatus for equipment.
So our official capital plan is due next week. I think it'll be with Mr. Burrell. So this is the chart that we provide and discusses our capital. There's a cover, and I don't know if it'll come with it. So this, you know, maybe tweaked a little bit, but this is the same document that we've shown Mayor Council for numerous years. And what your, the document you're looking at shows our capital apparatus, shows their year, how old it is, and what the expected life cycle is. And we've talked about the life cycle before. That could vary. That's our best estimate, but as we see a piece of apparatus, we have a position called the Chief Engineer, who's in charge of the maintenance. As that individual, as well as our fire chief, our chief operating officers, see the apparatus is maybe going up with repairs, you know, if we can't get parts, et cetera, we may have to adjust those numbers. So that life cycle number is our best estimate based on when we buy a vehicle, how long we think it should last. Then the next column is the replacement year. Now, you see all the question marks? That's because we are way off track in that replacement year. And the reason we're off track is because of the financial. The last time we got capital financial for the town's been several years ago. I could go look at that chart, give you the exact number. So we've had to put question marks and extend things a little longer. You'll notice the two that are in bold, the engine's been ordered, the 37-year-old engine being replaced is expected to be here in January '25 in rescue. It's 26-years-old, September of 2025. So the other thing that's going to drive this is when we work on cash flow, depending on the town's willingness and ability to contribute, that loan is out to 2038. So we know that we cannot borrow any more money, and we know we're not putting any more money in the capital fund because our operating is funded, you know, past what we need. So that creates the financial side of this, which is those loans are till 2038. So we're potentially not being able to look at buying any of those large pieces of equipment until 2038. And of course, you see those question mark dates, such as Engine 604, 2006 engine, should be, really be starting to look on being replaced, replaced in 2026. And it is one of our engines that is very high maintenance. Our chief engineer has a lot of trouble keeping that in service. It's just, it's an engine that has some of the rescue tools on it, and the chief can explain, responds on the calls. We do rotate when we can, but apparatus are set up for the chiefs to respond in a certain manner. They try to make adjustments, but that's a truck that's high maintenance. It is.
It's high maintenance, and just to give everybody an understanding of the high maintenance, it went out of service, it was out of service just about all summer this year.
Just all summer.
The transmission and pump replaced between parts and everything else that it needed to get done, it was out of service for an extended period of time.
So let me ask you a question. If we met your goal of 150,000 on the capital fund every year, between us and the county, when could you realistically replace that engine? Probably not.
So that's what I'll have on the full capital plan that you'll get next week. So we'll have those documents. So I would say that's going to reduce the payments $200,000 a year with that additional $150. You know, we'll be taking five, six, seven years off there. Not quite, well, quite half, $200,000 would cut it in half.
But I'm asking, when would you be able to?
That's what I'll give you on the cash sheet. I didn't figure that.
Because these dates really, what you're telling me is they need to be updated.
Right. And that's what I said, next week, you'll get the full plan that's due. This is for conversational purposes tonight, but our full plan is due to you by December 30.
Right. That would be helpful to have.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, exactly.
So these life cycle numbers, they, you had said that they are your best guess, but does that, it does, it does factor in like manufacturer recommendations?
Correct. And they don't really have a recommendation because they don't know the operations of the fire company. They don't know, they sell us a truck, they don't know whether we are a company that runs 10 calls a year or 400 calls a year. They don't know. And there are manufacturer and federal requirements, how that parts are available for.
And an FDA standard of how long apparatus should remain.
Passing inspection. So the truck could be five, six-years-old, seven-years-old, and if it's been run a lot, you can't pass pump inspection, then you're looking at $35 for a new call. Like you said, the transmission parts that were in 604. So there's a lot of factors. There's not a dead-set deadline anywhere in the country that any city or anybody can tell you dead-set. It's, as you said, it's our educated estimate based on manufacturer, what we see in the area, what kind of complexity of the truck is, how many, you know, calls it is running on. And again, the complexity of the truck, these trucks now all have airbags, come out, all these safety sensors that, which is good for us. It's wonderful to have all this. But with technology comes...
Price.
Price, and shortening of the time, just like a new computer. You know, you buy one, next thing you know, it's six months, eight months, you've got the next processor out, you've got the next operating system that's come out. So you're running that with these trucks too. They tell you that, hey, we don't have the computer technology to fix your 2006 truck because of the sensor gone bad, so we'll bypass it, hardwire it to get you through, and then you need to look at start doing something else.
Will you provide this to us digitally also?
Yeah, we'll send it.
Just to make sure Kate has it, well, this copy as well, just for the minutes, if you don't mind.
And I also think Councilmember Vice President Proust should...
Right. Yeah, so we'll have it, we'll have all the documents, but Kate needs to make sure she has the copy also.
So there's other capital?
Well, I thought we could move into number three.
Well, I want, so that, we only talked about apparatus. So there are other capital costs, which you all have been brought to your attention. So as you read down here at the very bottom, there's, for example, those SCBA that we're going to get. So they're going to have, you know, shelf life. So that all gets put on a chart as well, replacement of those ropes, rescue equipment. Those are capital items, whether or not something with four wheels on it goes down the road, like SCBA, that's a $400,000 investment. That's capital. That gets appreciated off in our finances, and it has a shelf life.
I'd like to point out one important item that he's referring to down here. It says hydraulic tools. The hydraulic tools that we are currently operating and using on our rescue truck. We will move over and operate and use on our new rescue truck when it comes in. But those tools are no longer being, they'll be serviced, but there's no longer parts available. The Hearst has gotten out of that business completely. They have moved up to another, a new tier of Hearst hydraulic equipment, and the battery operated, that's all that they're dealing with now.
So are you looking for the physical connection, or are you looking for battery operated?
Both.
You would...
So the current tools that we have are physical hydraulic hoses connected. Some of the equipment that we're looking at with our new rescue truck will be battery operated. We currently have a few battery-operated tools in our fleet of vehicles, but it's something that we've got to take into consideration, that, you know, if parts aren't available to repair when it comes time to service it, we're going to be out.
And 604 has hydraulic tools on it as well?
It does.
And what's the lifespan of those? Because rescue...
Same, same type of tools, same tier, Hearst has gotten out of it. They consider it their low pressure. They have moved to a new...
Right. But it's probably in the life cycle side of things, much newer.
I would say that, that equipment is 2006.
Probably 2006.
Yeah. When that apparatus came.
So is the industry, I'll use the radio, is the industry moving more towards battery?
It is. It is. It's moving more towards battery tools, and it's also moving to a new tier. It's a higher, higher pressure, higher hydraulic pressure system. So this...
Which is more expensive, right?
Yep.
What's the cost of the system now? Like to equip the rescue truck with the tools that you would need, that are hydraulic tools now? What's the cost?
You're looking at $200,000 to outfit to a completely brand-new system with the tools, and that's just the hydraulic tools, the pump, the hoses, things like that. With our new rescue truck, you're looking at easy. And that's not an official quote.
Right.
That's a rough ballpark.
So...
I mean, I won't spend too much time on this, but I'm just wondering, is battery more economic, and what are, what would be the...
Battery has its limitations.
Like running out?
Yeah, running out of power. I mean, we do have some adapters to do that, but just the battery tools themselves are designed for, I'll call them the easy extracations, the extracations that's a simple, pop the door open and get the patient out. When you talk a complex where you're, yeah, you know, you're rolling dashboards and everything else, you're going to want those hydraulic tools that have the ability to power through. You know, compared to your battery tools at home, if you have a drill that you just screw in, one or two screws here or there, it's going to last you a while. It's going to be, it's going to be just fine. If you have a screw gun that you're putting 100 screws in the wall, back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back, you're going to want something that's maybe plug into the wall power. If that's...
And so you're looking at both?
Yes. Having both ready.
Yep. And just referred back to what I said earlier, is it's just newer technologies come out, and if you hit the key thing, you pick up on it, parts not available. So the problem becomes is when, hopefully, this never becomes an emergency, that we have a breakdown, and the manufacturer shows up and says, we can't fix that. Now you make a, chiefs and stuff have a hard decision to make then, can we operationally do without that until the next budget year? Are we looking into contingency? What are we, what are we doing to resolve that issue? So that's why we try to stay ahead of those, so we don't, like, and the SCB is a prime example. I mean, we're going to be very honest, we kept stretching, 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 until it's got into a point where it's safety, we're very fortunate with the grant and the funding to get what the grant doesn't fund, but we don't want to get in that situation without the equipment. So we're trying to, when we submit these documents to you, we're trying to put everything on spreadsheets with our best estimated cost as well, years, replacement years.
All right. Let's slide into the funding formula, agenda item number three.
There's one there. I'll keep one for myself.
Yeah, do you have another one of the funding formula? Okay. Perfect. For Kate.
Okay. So we talked last time, and we just reviewed the $200,000 and the $150,000. So, and we reviewed last time the tax rates, and we got these numbers off of the constant yield tax rate that we got online, the chart that the county actually provides. So, you know, fire company operations, you're looking at about four cents, 3.74. At the current rate, capital, you have 2.83 cents. You add the two together, you know, you're looking about six and a half cents on the tax dollar for fire and rescue operations. Just as another thing to your other public safety, the police is 48 cents of your tax rate. And you all know that because you get the pie charts, and you got, just got your audited financials, PKS tells you, and your public safeties. So you have to get a lot of money for public safety. So that's that part, and then we talked about the formula. So what I did was, I compared to exactly what the county, the county provides a base amount of 250, and then 1,000 hours per call. So I just applied that to the town, the town base being 200,000. And if you did 1,000 hours per call for every town, we're pretty close to the 20150. It would be 153,000 based on the complete year calls of '22, 2023 estimated, took the first three quarters of what we've actually reported, and just estimated what October, November, and December, looks like about 151 calls in town. So, and we utilize those call-based funding. We use that for the capital. It's just what we do internally, just like you all allocate certain pots of money. It just works out well for us. Gives us what we need to do, and that's the way it works out. So just wanted to provide it to you, so copy it off the county formula. We'd be right in that. It's just another thing that helps show you that 200, that 150 is a pretty good number.
And just so you're aware, we want to get, I know the goal of these meetings is to try and get us to a funding formula. That is the goal for this year, moving into the calendar year, and so that we are all on the same page. The way that we've been working internally so far is that it would take January to December calls for the previous year, and you would provide us those call volumes. We would put them into the formula so that by January, when we start our budgeting process, we have that number moving into the next fiscal year, just so that you have an idea of how we want to...
And that's exactly what the county does by mid, by mid to the end of January, really earlier than February 1st, we have those call numbers because sometimes, you all know it, you run a report, it looks skewed, you go back and actually dig into it and make sure it's very accurate, because you're talking finances, you want the calls to be very accurate documented. So Mayor, that's exactly what...
So you all would be supportive of that? It's what you're doing currently.
It's what we do currently. So it's new, this would be nothing new to us because that's what we do with the county. We balance that out-of-town number, and they, you know, we know the 250's been set for like 15 years now, so nothing new for us.
So we could reasonably expect those numbers about the same time the county gets them, which is when?
Into January, no later than February.
Okay.
We try as early as possible in January, and we just had a conversation with the county's chief administrative officer, but it's like anybody else, staffing, number of people that cuts those numbers, and the time to review to make sure they're accurate.
But we could reasonably say by February 1st.
By February 1st, it shouldn't be any problem.
So does the county formula, correct me if I'm wrong, the county formula charges, not charges, provides, does it provide more for, I guess what I'm asking is in our formulations, I'm just throwing this out here, should we factor in more for out-of-town calls?
No, we wouldn't fund out-of-town calls.
But his little, his thing here, and $1,000 per...
Oh, that's what I'm saying. It does say... It's only in town, oh, yeah. Just like the county, they don't fund the in-town calls, they're zero. Out-of-town calls, 1,000, same thing, the town would be 1,000 for in-town call, or zero for out-of-town.
Dave, you're billing insurance companies.
We are billing, I would tell you, that is not, I think this year, we already got maybe eight or, maybe $1,000. And I'll tell you, one of the things that's hurt us is we put out to the public, we're not going to do any collections. So we sent three notices, and if, you know, we don't do anything, we don't call a collection agency, we don't do any calls EMS, you know, it's very aggressive, all the way up to a collection agency.
So when you do collect that money, is that for capital or is that for...
So since the town has, came up with 200,000 this year, the fire company approved, it will go to capital. So, and you'll see those reports, when you get the quarter reports, the line that says invoices...
If we get to the same funding level, are you billing for county runs as well?
We bill for all calls. We have to, but also...
We can't split our district. We have to, we have to bill for our entire district or not at all.
Dave, I'm trying to understand, when you're speaking about the billing and there not being a charge, that's for fire?
Fire.
But EMS, they'll take it all the way to collections?
Yeah, yes. EMS is just a regular business.
How is it something that...
Fire company, three bills, they get three bills, and of course, any form that somebody signs in, like some insurance companies, once you fill out a special form, we fill it out, and that's it. After that, it's just sitting there.
And while we're on this, what does the county provide from, do they provide capital funding?
The out-of-town calls, yes.
The funding, no, hold on. The funding formula, do they provide additional outside of the 250 plus 1,000 for each out-of-town call? No.
And they're expecting us to manage that money?
Right. Exactly.
And, you know, in our company, just like you said, the town has pots of money, that's our pot of money, and that works for capital.
So if we ended up getting to that funding formula that mimics theirs, we would not be cutting an additional check for...
That would be where we need to be.
When you're unable to collect that money from the home, let's say you send out three bills, you get money, do you write that off as bad debt? Does that show on the books?
No, because you're never going to ever collect it. I mean, we have a number, I can run a number out of QuickBooks, but like Mr. Burge said, why are you, why are you going to keep putting something on there that's a liability, that's going to be on there forever? At some point, you're going to have to write off, like you said, the bad debt, so why carry it three years and do all that, and add to our financial cost of accounting? If somebody wants to know that number, we can tell you what that number is.
All right. Let's move on to impact fees, if you don't mind.
Yep. So impact fees, I don't have a handout. It's basically, the only question I have on my sheet of paper is, what do you owe me from us? Because we're going to, I mean, just, we, there's no real formula. I mean, I've researched it, I can certainly give you the copies, pages, and I'm telling you, I just get it off the internet. I mean, it called like Queen Anne's County, what's the county do? As we talked about last time, that handout, it can be based on square footage, it can be based on...
I think on our end, it might be helpful. On our end, we're looking to probably adjust our impact fees. I think there's an appetite by the council to want to do so. I think understanding what the funding formula is, from there, it's how we kind of can get to that mark. So I think that's more on our side, less on your side. That's how I think. What's the...
Right. But we are now looking to...
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, they don't really need to stress themselves out about trying to find a formula that fits for us.
I don't think it's so much, and sorry to frame it around, but I don't think it's so much us trying to help you find a formula, but as much as can we offer assistance as far as, hey, the apartment complex, Ocean's East, we ran X number of calls, even though it's a sprinkler building, we've had two buildings wired, we've had, you know, and I'm throwing random numbers out, but if that's kind of information that may assist you with developing a formula for, you developing your formula for impact fees, I think that's the question that David was having.
We have an existing formula for impact fees. We would, we're evaluating, because you don't want to charge the impact fee without knowing what you're trying to recover. So here, we see an increased cost of service for fire and EMS services. Is there a way that we can move the needle a little bit on impact fees to help recover some of those costs? And that's what we're looking at, I think, internally.
So with that being said, it sounds like what we would want, if I'm understanding correctly, would be the number of runs or calls that are done to those places, or to developments, not just Ocean's East, but I guess all of them, and then what, multiply, divide, come up with?
Well, I don't, I don't even think we really need that. I think we can look at like, say, Ocean's East as an example. I think that's what you're referencing, is that there you have a building that's built new construction with fire suppression systems, and you still get a large call volume there. So with that, how do we recover impacts on future developments that may mimic that size?
For example, hypothetical, because it just came up last week, was the German town, 50 units duplexes in townhomes, that would be the, well, if it proceeds to the next step, what would be the first major impact fee if we're on the new system? That's where I do think you'll, you know, would be a huge asset to us.
But you're correct, you look at existing infrastructure and base our formula.
But that's more on our side, less on your side. But it's helpful to hear those things and good feedback, so as you go to different calls or notice things like that, it helps us when we make the decisions about moving the needle on some of those fees. So I think it's good to hear, but I think it's already on our radar. So I appreciate it.
And that's probably, and that's a great segue to the next.
And Kate just gave us the, we're at 30-minute mark, so thank you.
So that's a great segue to the next. So if you are looking at what we're emailing to you and what we're providing to the planning commission, we list those things, so like those apartments, we list those type of calls that we expect to run at those apartments based on what the chiefs told me, I just typed it up. We've kind of got a standard one now, so that's good, so I don't have to bug them so much. But, you know, based on what it is, so read those. That would help you understand, all of you understand, when it's a residential complex for fire, what the impacts are, what type of calls that we expect to run there, and probably EMS leaders will be confused. So that, that would help you. So that's a good segue into that. And again, we're just going to ask again, can we please, please get these plans more than four days before the planning meeting? I have the whole packet here, and I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus, of the dates the application come in versus the date we get it, and you've got them like on 11/29, and we get it on 12/13. So the contract clearly says they are to be to us after they're submitted. Now, we, we know if they come in at 4:55 and you guys close at 5:00, but the next business day, we should be getting an email or a call, hey, come up, pick the plans up, or hey, check the email, make sure you got your email, not when the constant contact comes out, letting the public know there's a meeting. Because like the Wawa plans, oh my gosh, you know, you can't read them, you got to look at them, you got to zoom in on them, those types of things. You know, I've got to call the chief, sometimes he needs to talk to a subordinate chief, so he has experience at a certain level. So we take, we take that part, and that's why we have asked for years to do this for you. We take our responsibility very seriously on those reports, but we got to have more than three or four days when they're complex.
From your side, what would be the, in your opinion, the appropriate time?
Well, we can change your rules.
But I'm just asking...
Your rule says, your rule says two weeks. So if you follow your own rules, because the application says they have to turn stuff in two weeks, if we get it the next day after two weeks, that's fine.
We did, we did have a conference.
We don't want you to change anything other than what you've already done, just your application says that, uh, two, two weeks is when you're supposed to get them to plan.
So for the Wawa, are you saying, did you not receive those plans until the public was alerted to?
The very first thing, actually, I saw on the dispatch Facebook.
Gotcha.
And then, then the contact, constant contact came out, we got it shortly after that.
And we did have a staff level discussion on that, so.
Yeah, so, so that's all we're asking, and, and yeah, this is why it helps you all, you seek, get to see those reports, the planning commission, and hopefully, these are, these are going to the developers, but obviously, that was a little misorganized here. But yeah, your planning commission application, applications must be submitted at two weeks prior to a regular scheduled meeting of planning commission. Nine copies of the select plan must be provided with the application, so there, here's an example, one came in on 11/29, 12/8. There's one in here.
I do, I do want to say, commend you all on responding to those, because you have responded to all those inquiries.
Every single one of them.
And I want to also say to our planning department, we've done a good job of making sure you do receive them, but I think that we can improve the process, is what we're saying, so I think that's reasonable.
On our end, in the process, where does the fire marshal play a part?
That's separate from the fire companies.
No, I know that, I understand it's separate, but what I'm asking is, where do they, what is their timeframe, what do they?
That would be a question that we'd have to ask Dave.
That's what I was curious about, because in my brain, I mean, and again, he's not here to answer those, that department's not here.
But after our planning commission reviews, it can go to the fire marshal.
But what I'm asked, but that's what I'm stating, if it, if, if the timing, if the timeframe were the same, if it's sent out to the fire marshal and the fire, and Berlin Fire at the same time, then the thought was, you know what I'm saying, if you're thinking, fire, fire marshal, oh, let me get these guys at the same time, they, they have enough time.
I mean, the way it should work, the developer should have an extra set of plans when they submit to the town.
Right, what I'm saying is, yeah, so, there's never been that complaint from that.
Somebody's changed this from three to nine.
Sets.
Yeah, because we needed more, because of the planning commission.
Okay.
But what we're going to do, I want to acknowledge your all's response to our requests and the planning department's follow-up to make sure you all actually received those plans in a, in a reasonable time. We're going to do our best, and we've already talked about it internally, to try and give you a little bit more time to provide that feedback. So, hopefully, next time we meet, we'll be talking about.
Your feedback, when you look at life, what do you specifically look at? Obviously, turning radius for your trucks and stuff, what else?
Everything from turning radius, access, parking, how many parking spots are, you know, everything, I mean, stair, stairwells, can you reach, you know?
Close is worse.
If you've got the entire front of the building lined up with double stack parking, is our ladder truck still going to be able to reach? I mean, everything, we, we try to look at everything of it.
Right.
Um, you know, can you get access to the backside of the building, if that side of the building's on fire, do we have easy access to around that? Get to the roof, all that kind of, from the fire side, from the fireside, we're looking at all that kind of stuff.
That's what my question is, if those guys get it, which of course you are two separate entities, and I understand that, but they have enough time. I would not yet ever have complained saying that they didn't have enough time, so my brain is, they, if we sent it to you at the same time that they got it, respectively, you would have enough time as to, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, as long as there are timeframes, yeah.
Now, the two week mark is when it has to be at the planning department, not to the planning commission.
Correct.
Just so that we're all on the same page, that's when it has to arrive in the planning department, so. All right, any closing remarks before we move on to EMS? All right, up next, let's start with Berlin Fire Company Emergency Medical Services. First item on the agenda is the budget request for FY '25.
So, uh, this is what, again, just to follow up from the last meeting, uh, this is more difficult. So the reason it's more difficult is because the way we do EMS budget, because it's not as fixed as the fire budget, where we can tell you, and there's historical data, hey, this fire stays the same, the EMS, the things that affect EMS, very first thing is payroll. Ninety percent of our budget is payroll, over ninety percent. So, for example, just alerted that one of our neighboring companies within Worcester County has done, is in the process, and I don't want to name them, because I don't know that it's got out to all employees and everything, but it's a rather hefty salary adjustment. So why, why does that affect Berlin? Because we all in the county talk to each other, the employees talk to each other, and they do move. And if we're not competitive, we lose people, so when, and I can speak freely about Ocean City, we've talked about that before, that we cannot keep up with the collective bargaining that they have, we, we, but we try to do it in other ways. You know, small employer, more personable, you know, that type thing, less call volume, so a person who's applying for a job.
I don't know about that one, though. When you look per unit, I don't know about that one.
Yeah, we need to start to find it out, but there's, there's a lot more.
Cause your year round call volume higher than their year round call volume per station?
But, but overall, you go to Ocean City, you know, during those summer months, what, what goes on in Ocean City, we don't have to tell anybody what goes on. And all, and the type of calls, the clientele that you're going to have, with, you know, it's supposed to be a favors, or with alcohol and things like that.
You have sun cakes.
Yeah. You, you come, you come to Berlin, our, our calls, and you all see the quarterly reports, while we might have a little peak in the summertime with more accidents, but you see our quarterly reports, they're pretty good, consistently. So as, as somebody applying for a job, do I want to have that summer? And do I want to have all that management overtime, can't go home, this, that, and the other that they have because of their, you know, I'm not talking directly towards, just their operations. So again, we have to stay competitive, so that's part of the budget. The other part is that call value and with the formula, we need to know that revenue. We don't know what the ask is to the town until we get that formula and see what the county is. That's, the town number, the way we do the budget, is always the last item, we see what the revenue is, okay, what are we short? Revenue expenses, that's what the town asks, is generally.
Have you calculated an average per call cost every time you sign an ambulance?
Yeah, we had that on one of the other reports.
You average, you use so much material, you have our exact.
Yeah, well, we, we just took the, yeah, we just took the call value, I mean, I can do a rough number, if we got 2,000. Yeah, well, 2,000 calls a year roughly, and, and our budget's 1.3 million, so.
So if you're waiting on the numbers while you're working on the math, would it be reasonable to say that we could have the number for EMS by February 1st?
By February 1st, yeah, again, February 1st, because. So you're looking at about $650 a call for us, if you take two, if you take 1.3 million by like 2,000 calls?
600, what?
650.
650, and charge what?
Uh, well, it all depends on what the level of service is, it could be as low as $200, it could be as high as 2,000. I, I wouldn't know that, actually, I could average, you could probably come to the average.
And you should have a base rate for VLS and a base rate for ALS.
Two, two for each, actually, because ALS is one of the five, and there's the.
Can you send us those numbers?
So we can just get you, I can just get you the average.
Can you send us what those base rates are for each level?
If you start breaking it down like that, then you can look where you're coming up short on your revenue and where you have to adjust your prices.
And, and, and we can't, as, so I explained that, so, uh, we can adjust the prices whatever we want to be, but all we're doing is playing games with numbers, because Medicare's going to pay what they're going to pay, there's a chart. I can send a bill for $5,000 if we needed 5,000 a call, Medicare's going to pay X. And then they get that every January 1st, there's a chart that comes out from the healthcare fund, it's FHS, HCFA, and MMS, the. And Maryland Medicaid, paid $50 for long time, it's 100, now it's going to go up, they just passed the law, it's going to go up like 110 or something. Oh, great, so a person who has Maryland medical assistance, the bill, it doesn't matter what the bill says, you're going to get the 100 bucks.
You have 100 bucks, you're spending 650.
Yeah, or more, or, or that call could be more, because that's an average.
That doesn't work.
That, well, it doesn't, and that's why we've gone to the state legislatures, and they, they're, they're working on that process, but they're balancing a budget with their Maryland medical assistance as well, they're getting some of that, my understanding, the way some of that comes down from the federal government, Maryland medical assistance, so, so, and, and that 650 is an average, so what if that call is an ALS call, where we pushed all sorts of drugs, we've spent 13, 1400 dollars of equipment that we've spent, and we get 100 bucks?
But that's for Medicare.
Medical assistance, not Medicare, Medicaid, medical.
Right, but if someone is not on that.
Right.
If it says regular health insurance, you can.
So, so, yeah, and, and just like, I'm sure you go to the doctor, you see your EOB, your explanation of benefits, your doctor charged 500, but your insurance says, I'm only accepting 300, and that's what I'm going to pay, and the doctor agrees, and we do participate too, has to, has to accept it, or take it zero. So we do the same thing, we participate with all, you name the insurance, I could probably go on the computer and tell you we participated with it. So, so the, the billing, and we do, as Ms. Nicholas had said earlier, is, you know, we do operate that more on a business approach, so we do go all the way to collection agency, but when the people don't have anything, you know, I talk to the collection agency, use it once a month, and, and they'll tell me, hey, a big write-off's coming, you know, we, we have exhausted all efforts, they just don't have it, there's no need to keep it on the books, or deceased, no estate, you need to take it off, they need to write it off their books, it's reported up out there. So, so the FY '24, '25 budget, but as the mayor said, you know, by February 1st, we should be able to give you a, a pretty good number, but it could fluctuate, so, so again, the why it could fluctuate is everybody in the county's in budget negotiation. So what happens if another entity during their budget negotiations, their officers go to their powers to be, and says, hey, we're going to give a $3, an hour raise? Well, once we hear that, we got to, we got to move too, so, so again, our EMS budget is, is difficult because of the personnel. I mean, you're going through it with your salary study.
Benefits.
With benefits, when those move, and we don't get those health benefits, just like you do, until, hard number until 60 days prior. We get the rough numbers, and we deal with the same broker you deal with. You know that, you know, Mr. Kail Dealey at Wood Digital doesn't really give you that hard number, it's that 60 day.
But we do, we factor that in.
Yeah, and we do too.
And, yeah, so, I mean, but the thing is, is that when you give us a number by February 1st.
Yeah.
That will be our working number.
As long as we understand that, so we don't get it in a pigeonhole.
Well, I want to clarify, that as we get closer to our budget being adopted, it gets increasingly more difficult for us to change that number.
We understand.
Just so that we're all on the same page, so.
And that's why, if you go back and look at historical communications, we had the work session in April, and then usually, there's all.
By that point, the budget's pretty much.
Pretty well, but sometimes you get an end of the April 1st to May, and you shoot it to the health insurance certification, hey, we need to go up or down a little bit.
We typically budget 10%, each year, we'll talk to Dealey and see if they see something bigger, but we do typically budget 10%. The mayor council also keep a contingency available for bigger swings, so that we can mitigate that funding impact in one given year. So just know that that's like how we do it internally.
Contingency.
What's that?
So we don't have a contingency.
Oh.
All right, so that's, that's the budget. The capital, ambulants and equipment, there's been no change, I mean, you'll get the official documents next week, but there's been no change other than what the ask has been for the EMS, which was the 52,500 for 20, July 24, 52,000 for July 25, and 75,000 from there on, and that spreadsheet, I brought one with me, we ran it all the way to 2039, it showed you. So there's been no change in that, the ambulance prices have had a, a big jump. I guess, you know, we do need to give you an updated one, I will have an updated one, and I was understanding, and I, I take bumps all the time, about the LDC funds, I thought it was going to be that 40 some thousand for three years, now I understand, pretending to mean it's only one year. So we'll update that spreadsheet showing only one year, and we're going to show you the problem it's going to create, because it is going to create.
Well, I understand too, that that is funding for, that's one avenue of funding.
Right.
And there is $45,000 in that for a three-year span. Now, with that being said, gets to my point, I think the funding formula that we've been working with from the county has $15,000 per unit.
25,000 per year, I'm going to give you a copy here, but.
They went up last year.
They've gone up twice now.
So what is their new number?
Well, I'm going to give you, give you a copy.
Okay, but can you also tell me what the number is?
25,000.
It's 25 per unit?
Yeah, and that's where we came up with the 75,000, and we gave that to you all before on the, on the spreadsheet that looks like.
And that's year over year?
Yep, that looks like that, the cash flow sheet that we emailed to guys, when Mr. Burrow asked for a cash flow sheet.
So that means that every year moving forward, they are at a threshold of $25,000 per unit for everybody in the county?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, I'll ask my next question when we get to 40, anything else?
Uh, so again, so do you, I guess I ask the question so I don't waste time, because you brought up a good point, and maybe I made a wrong of a bad assumption, now if I did, okay, I apologize, the 45,000 is just out of LDC, you could still be funding us 52.5, but you might be funding out of another pot, so maybe I jumped to a.
Well, but the thing is, the thing is that we're going to try to come up with a formula, that's the goal of these meetings, is to come up with a formula. And with that being said, how we can meet that level of funding, once we agree on whatever that number and formula is, that's more on our side, I think.
All right, so, so I won't adjust that, but, so when the new EMS capital comes, it'll be that same sheet showing you that. The other thing with capital for the EMS is, of course, we just got the new heart monitors, but we need to plan 15 years from now to replace them again. The A Ds are in the process of being replaced, they'll be on the 10-year, those type of things, so there is more capital than just before we.
Does the county fund additional capital, or how do they do that?
They expect that to come out of our.
The funding formula.
Out of the funding formula.
And you're always applying for grants.
And we're always looking for grants, just like the A Ds, some of that's coming from the front.
There's a D grant that Senator Van Hollen's office sent over, I'll pass that along to all of you as well. It's the, I think, one of the revolving lending funds, but.
So the funding formula is. So, so basically, just opening sentence, we already kind of touched that on a budget, you know, over, over 90% of the EMS request is personnel cost. So just in the same comparison, we actually did that, if you recall, we asked, work session, the tax rate, you know, the current year, the allocation of 408,046.81, you know, that's about 7.63 cents. Based on our ask, the 52,500 for two years, that would be a little less than a penny on the tax dollars, and if it went to the 75,000, it'd be almost a penny and a half, 1.4 cents. So total, again, I had the word estimated there, because our payroll benefits fluctuate, talking about eight and lower, eight and a half cents, and the police at 48 cents. So mayor, just to reiterate, I did that right there at the beginning, the capital is 25, from the county is 25,000 per ambulance. It's the same as we indicated, you know, two years, we, we are asked to the town to get into the same number as the county. Operations, so, so this is the county formula, so for a full run, that's transported, means they respond on a call, and we transport somebody to a medical facility, it's $900. The county reduces that all the way down to $225 if it's an in-town call, so that's a difference of $675 reduction.
So, hold on, let's go back to that, so the full run amount for transported run is 900.
900.
So the delta between what the county funds, they still provide the 225 for in-town run? But the funding gap exists between the 225 and the 9?
Right, 670, 675. If we do not transport, and this is the caveat, only if it's outside the town limits, it's $225. If it's in the town limits, it's zero, okay, nothing. So all the calls that we respond to in town that are refusals, whatever the reason for the no transport is, that's just the easiest way to say it. Any call that we respond in town, no transport, the county does not fund that at all. So do you guys see those numbers on your quarterly report?
All right, I'm sorry, can we just go back real quick to this, so a full run amount for in-town is $225?
Correct.
So regardless of whether you have to go from the station to one side of town, let's say, Joe and Tony, or you're transporting.
They fall down the fire department.
The, yeah, and you're transporting from the nursing home to the hospital, it's 225.
225. And the same thing for the 900, if it's right outside the town limits at Caleb Road, or we got to go all the way to Ashetie South Point.
So then, so then let's say in town, if there is, I'm just thinking of a scenario, if you're, you're called for a. of you're, you're called for an overdose, you Narcan them, they come back and they refuse, you get nothing.
Nothing, and, that's, that's correct, nothing from the county.
Nothing from the county.
Now they, now they will get a bill for service from, from us, and it's around $200 and some dollars, because we did transports a very little amount, and that's very, I would say it's very seldom paid.
That's the EMS bill.
EMS.
So the basic, so it's safe to say the basic EMS fee is 200 bucks, in-town, for non-transport?
For non-transport, yes, yes.
Should be 225, just so that we're all on the same page.
Well, he's talking about billing the patient, billing the patient.
Right, but the, but the number, I think it's important for us to talk about the funding formula numbers, more importantly. Should be 225 for non-transports in town.
Yeah.
And currently, you get zero, because the county does not reimburse you that.
And we'll, we'll get down to that, as we take our time, work our way down here.
Dave, one quick question, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but it's my understanding that the county took over the EMS division for Pokemoke.
Yeah, that's a town under department, town, city of Pokemoke department.
The city, so.
City took it.
Didn't go to county, went to the city.
Went to the city, many years ago.
Okay, and how did that come about?
So, quick history is, the fire company, because of the cost and all that, and the personnel, the time it took, the fire company.
Said we can't do it.
Said we can't do it anymore. An EMS corporation, nonprofit, just like we have, was formed, Pokemoke City, you know, Pokemoke EMS Incorporated, whatever, whatever it's called, was called, and then it failed because, again, lack of volunteers, it's just too much, it needs to be a career peak, so the city, there was no choice, the city had to take over the responsibility. Now, they, they have, they have the full budget, just like the numbers I gave you last year, if you guys want to start your own fire EMS department, what it would cost to do.
No, but like, from a partnership standpoint, getting back to the leased employees, we do have LEOPS, which is a recruitment and retention tool that is available to EMS personnel. We do have the ability to help with more like solid numbers for the healthcare costs and things of that nature, is there an appetite to want to do that again? It's a way that we can help bolster your recruitment and retention, now we'd have to talk about how we share those costs, but we can help you probably get to a better fixed cost earlier on in the budgeting cycle.
I don't think there is, because the, why the leased employee agreement failed is because the rules that say whoever the employer is has to be fully in charge, so the town staff would be fully in charge, the EMS employees, the chief couldn't walk in, the president couldn't walk in and tell the employee in that firehouse to do anything. So, you know, so there's, yeah, so there's no appetite for that, because if they're working in that building, the officers need to be able to tell those people what to do.
I think there's ways to navigate that, if there's an appetite there to want to offer those benefits, know that the door is open from the town's perspective, that we would be willing to have that conversation, so.
Yeah, I think that would be a legal thing, if you all, you know, dragged out tonight, or if you all can find some sort of legal ruling that allows.
I, I don't know that anything has changed since we.
As of, as of, when was our LDC meeting? How long ago was that?
September.
As of the day after that, they did not change.
As far as, what are you asking?
Well, what, what, the way we had to set that up, to comply with the IRS rule, was required that the town administrator, well, the town administrator was the boss of everybody who was in that program, because they were town employees, and that's how all that started, and I, I don't think these guys were going to do that.
Yeah, and, and the reason, we investigated that, and it came up at a conversation at a sidebar, after you mentioned it, at the LDC, the very next day, we checked into that, because I got questions from employees, the press got hold of that, I got phone calls.
Well, it is available, but note too, that the town administrator, I just want to be clear for the record, the town administrator never directed operational activities of firing EMS personnel, I just want to be clear about that, and I think all of you know that as well, so.
That's, I would tell you, that's a direct incorrect statement.
Okay, we can agree to disagree, but.
Because I witnessed it.
Well, know that, know that if the conversation would like to be started, we can explore options together, if that's something you would like to do.
Okay. All right, so the next slide is the, of the county formula, the mileage is paid at the IRS rate only for transports to Salisbury Title Health, and this is again, when I'm talking about this formula, don't get sucked into the rabbit hole of, we're just talking about Berlin, this is everywhere, so, so no, no companies get paid for, they only get paid mileage for the transports to Title Health, PRMC. Last year.
But that's also because the county formula, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, it has a, a point at which round trips have to exceed a certain amount.
25 miles, we don't need title rounds.
Right, so that's, that's the reason, they do reimburse for AGH for other entities that may hit the greater mileage threshold.
Nobody hits that.
Okay, so.
So.
But the round trip mileage is really the ticker there, right?
It's, it's not the round trip, it's 25 miles, it's not the round trip.
The funding formula that Weston sent, says something about round trip miles.
Yeah, I, I got, yes, it's just, the easiest way to say it is Title Health, so we don't confuse them, if, if we go to Title Health, we get paid $1.15 a mile for, for that, for that mileage, going to Title Health. It was the IRS rate, but last year, it was supplemented due to fuel and maintenance costs going up, for everybody, but especially for Pokemoke, because all of their calls, they're going to Title Health.
Wouldn't it make more sense, I don't, this is a county thing, but wouldn't it make more sense to just include that into the fee of the transport run?
They are billed.
Why, I don't understand why that, I mean, I'm not going to argue with it, but I don't see why that happened.
Well, I can tell you why, it's because it, the formula, that way, it gives those companies like Pokemoke or Snow Hill, who run the most calls, that, to PRMC, that amount of money. If you lumped it up in, and it's just added, say you change 900 to 1,000, well, now you're giving all of us the money that we don't need. Yeah, so the formula, while it might sound confusing or complex, there's thought process for all of them, so that is one of the thought processes, those companies that are putting more mileage, add more expenses. For our example, we can keep our ambulances 10 years, Pokemoke can, they're about five or six years, they've got ambulances with 300,000 miles on.
Now, is there any, you mentioned that the mileage had been adjusted due to fuel costs, is that holding constant for FY 25, do you know?
Our initial conversations with the, through the strategic planning is to plan on the same formula. So the next item that's funded in the county, for every full-time equivalent employee, you get $8,000, so like us, with 16 employees, 16 times 8,000 would be, would, what we would get in that, in that category.
Does the county reimburse for all of your full-time equivalents?
Yes, oh yeah, yeah.
Because the, the reason I ask is the, the formula, I want to, I want to make sure that when we're developing it, that we're trying to mimic the county's formula. So the version that I have is a little bit older, and did not have the same number of full-time equivalents that you have currently, that's why I'm asking the question is, are they?
We're up to 16 now.
I, I know, I, I understand that, I'm asking, do they hold at that number, or have they adjusted their full-time equivalents to match your current staffing?
Well, we have, we're ending this year, so it'll be 16 for this year, yes.
What did the county fund for FY 24, how many full-time equivalents?
I have to look at paperwork.
124 for that.
But we, yeah, we report that based on our payroll, so, so the reporting this year will be 16 full-time people. So 16 times 8, if you did the math, there you go. Yeah, there it is down below. There's a personnel supplement category, that right now is in several different, if you just add it all together, they're dealing with a supplement of 175,000 hours, how that come up, how that came up, it's been developed over the years, it first was developed to make sure there was enough money for daytime ALS in the companies that had a lower call volume, example Bishopville, O'Shaw, newer, O'Shaw didn't have ambulances at that time, newer, and then they added 115,000 hours to get us the two EMTs, so that the, the busier companies could go to the four people on duty, and the lower-volume companies could at least have one crew on duty 24 hours a day, so there's a personnel supplement of 175,000 hours in, in the formula.
Will they keep that supplement if you go to six time, 16 full-time equivalents?
Yeah, that has nothing to do with, with any modification, that's a fixed number, unless we, the strategic planning, the EMS captain, the presidents get together, we can go straight that number.
And that stays fixed?
That's, yeah, that's 175. So I, I just took, I call it town draft, I don't know what else to call it, so just kind of did the math, if you use the same county formula, 16 full-time personnel, as Mr. Oris just did, 128,000, if you match the supplement, it's another 175,000. So the non-transport calls, 314 calls in the first three quarters, reports, and then I estimated the last quarter, so that would be times, you know, 200, 314 times 225 calls, you're looking at about 17,650 dollars. The next one, 896 transports, but it's only at 675 per call, it's, it's the delta, as the mayor said, because the, the county is already providing $225 a call, for that call, so the difference is, what they reduce us is the 675.
Now, the 314 and the 896, as far as call volume, that's total call volume, is that split in-town, out-of-town?
Well, yes, because, because, well, no out-of-town calls down here.
No, 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 I'm saying right here, the 314 and the 896.
Those are all in-town.
All in-town calls.
And you guys see those numbers, those came right off the quarterly reports, except for estimating the last quarter.
So Dave, there's obviously a lot of numbers here. So, this, this is looking forward to, this is not forward, this is looking to FY 25, so using the formula for FY 24, and at 16 as a full-time employees. So, I don't want to confuse anyone, including myself on this, the 125,000 quote-unquote extra for the additional EMS crews that the town provided in this fiscal, that was in addition to the 175?
It's not extra, it's in the contract, it just says we have to provide a detailed explanation of those expenditures, so it's not any extra money that we're getting.
Maybe that wasn't the right word.
The contract just specifies, we have to justify that in further detail by somebody payroll.
This is the second year we've provided.
Second year we've provided.
Right, so, but what I'm saying, that's, okay, so extra was probably not the right word.
How about increase?
Looking for, the, the increase, but you also, did you, you also received 175,000 from the county, correct?
So, so the easiest way, I think here, here, and I had this to explain, so I think the easiest comparison is in the supplement, the 175, you're already, the town is already really providing us in that category 125,000, because within that 175 is the 115 for the two EMTs that the county is providing. So, so, so that 175, if you compared it, I would say the town's already doing 125 of that, because that's where the EMT number is in the formula for the county. If that, if that helps you at all.
So the supplement's only 50,000?
Yeah, supplement's 175, but if you, from the county, but if you want to compare it, if you want to break that out, compare it, the supplement that you're providing now for two EMTs is 125.
But, but you could also argue that it's full-time equivalents, I mean, we, we got to really look at, it's helpful to have these numbers, but I think now what we need to do is take the county formula, try to make your numbers and the county formula kind of mimic one another, so that the next time we put our heads together, we can start saying, hey, this fits or this doesn't fit, and look at tangible.
Yeah, don't get around not looking for problems, I'm trying to figure this out.
Well, and I think, I agree, that is the next step, and, and I don't think we can really do that until February 1, until we see what our, what the county formula is going to mathematically equate to, and what our expenses are, our needs, our expenses, and then see, because I, I'm a realistic person, do we, we'd love to have 974, but do we need it, we've got, looky and I, we, we would never ask you for something that we couldn't spend, I mean, serious, serious business here, I mean, if I could remember, or EMS, remember the mic, hang us out to dry, me out to dry for saying that, but again, anything that we ask anybody for, we've got to show the expenses to, to, to do that, and we can't really do that till February 1st.
For EMS.
For EMS. But we wanted to show you the formula and say.
Well, this is what we asked for.
Yeah, which is, if you did mimic dollar for dollar, the county formula, you're looking at 976,450 plus mileage, I did not go in the computer and try to pick out all the in-town calls that were transported to Salisbury, I just thought it was a moot point, you know, need to get into those pennies tonight, but there is, but there is an expense there for going to Salisbury, and as we mentioned to you, we do go more to Salisbury because of the protocols, and, you know, AGH.
Would you be able to provide?
And we'll have to tell, we'll have to tell you what those numbers are, because we can't do that math.
Yeah, but I think that it might be difficult to, because the county doesn't differentiate mileage-wise, if you transport an in-town run or an out-of-town run to Title Health.
Correct, you're already paying.
Right, so what I think the best thing for our formula may be, is you could say the number of times you went to Title Health, and we could weight that against the calls that we have on file for in-town, to help arrive that, that way, I think it's important for us, if we're looking at the formula, that we try to cover that cost.
Right.
If we can, but it's not beneficial for you all, nor for us, to split hairs on that amount, it'd be easier to just wait the calls, I think.
Yeah, and we're not going to double dip, I mean, you know, if we're getting, if it's in the county formula, we're not going to start to ask the town for us, it's not very easy.
So just have a general question, I asked this at the first one, why is the town, why has the town not been doing the formula? And Zach, I'll ask, you're the longest-tendered here at the table, you know why?
I mean, it was always, for as far as I know, and keep in mind, when I joined the team, they had already separated ways with the leased employees, and that's when you all went through your decrease in funding, so when we were coming back during my tenure, it was how do we restore some of that funding?
Those more fundamental.
Right, and it was not a funding formula, although I think the goal has always been to try and reach some understanding of what the cost would be year over year, but we've never had a tangible discussion on a formula, would you agree?
Not in as detail as tonight.
You all have presented your numbers, we've kind of said, hey, what, what can we bring to the table, but there's never been a conversation about, hey, this is the amount of calls, this is how it correlates with the county's funding, and where the, the missing component is.
I really think this is going to be very helpful for all of us. Because it provides that accountability to taxpayers, that they get to see, this is why, you know, because I've heard these comments, oh, the fire company gets all this money, you know, EMS gets all this money, excuse me, I'm always going to struggle with that, but it's, now we can, to be able to show, if we can, in turn, obviously, be able to show, this is why, divide it out, so I've never seen numbers like this, but it's, I think it's very helpful.
And this, Steve, just give you, in the screen, just give you a little history, and you can go around on your own website, and find, if you pull up the strategic plan, 2016 version, or whatever it is, you'll see, I think it's 3C funding formula, so that's when it was very heavily discussed, and it was over at the Head Start Building, when we had all the sticky notes, and we weren't allowed to vote, like, I wasn't allowed to vote, Chief Downing was not allowed to vote, the citizens put their sticky notes up, and that team that did that put those priorities, and it was a priority back at your last strategic planning, you'll see it come up with a funding for the, for EMS, so that's when we had to, and we've had it, but not in this detail that we've done tonight to downtown, I'll say it shouldn't be very penny, except for the mileage.
I mean, I'm really.
But we'll, we'll have our, we'll have our numbers by, by February, that county chief administrator, also, knows the importance, not only to Berlin, but all the, none of us can do a budget, so you know what the revenue, district revenue.
All right, let's get to number four, if we can, just so we can try and make it through all of our numbers.
Impact fees, had the same question, what's needed, I think you've already told us what's needed, but I would, I would again stress, and we'll mix four and five together, kind of same time, because they do lead in each other, is go back and look at the emails that we've sent you, it'll tell you where we've written those planning documents, where we've written up what the items is, so you'll see, for example, if it's a three-story, multi-story building, as the chief explained to you, what the EMS captain is looking at. building, as the chief explained to you, what the EMS captain is looking at is, you know, increased manpower, how the structure is built. If it's a three or four-story building, does it have an elevator in it? Help move the patient. What's the width of the halls? And again, the manpower, because you get somebody on the fourth floor, that's going to take both crews out of service. Because the first crew is coming, they're going to say, oh, my gosh, we've got to ask some help here. So now the second crew is going to come to do that. So the more of those you build, and start taking that second crew out of service, with our call name, that could lead us to having a third crew working. So I just encourage you to go back and look at those emails of those documents that we've sent.
And once again, we'll try to get closer, less to the four-day side, more to the, closer to the two-week side.
Same thing. If we get the, like you said, the application comes in, day not, day not, if we can get it, that's.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a reasonable amount of time for like looking that over within planning and zoning, but I think we can probably get that too quicker than four days.
Yeah, yeah. As I said, so it's two weeks, so I don't know. Have to look at Mr. Guest. What the definition of two weeks, is that 10 days or 14 days?
I think 14.
Yeah, so if it's 14, because it didn't say business on there, it said days. So we appreciate that, and we'll reply back. But our EMS captain, you know, takes the time to give me all that feedback, and I'm just the secretary. If you want to take it up, based on what he or she's looking at on the drawing.
So on to number six, if you don't mind. And just so that we're all on the same page, Dave, correct, David Fitzgerald, correct me if I'm wrong. The, I think number six spans from the discussion we had regarding an onsite EMS crew. The town had appropriated FY24 funds to be carried forward, well, FY23 funds to be carried forward to FY24. We had asked for and identified certain events based off of the police department's emergency planning that was done. We identified two of those dates as being Ice Ice Berlin and New Year's Eve Ball Drop. Those were communicated along with the others to the fire company and fire company EMS. The invoice or draft quote was provided to the town for those services. We went back and forth on the placement of the apparatus. There was a disagreement between the town and the fire company EMS regarding the placement of the apparatus. In full transparency, EMS did send an invoice to the town. We didn't, the town administrator and I had a conversation with David Fitzgerald, saying that we had discussed that since we couldn't reach an agreement on the placement of the apparatus, we weren't going to cover the cost of the invoice. We both agreed, both sides agreed to that. We did ask that your team, being the EMS and fireside, revisit our request for onsite services. We do have the funding to be able to cover that. I don't know the outcome of that meeting, though.
Well, the EMS captain has just reiterated that, and then some additional information came to light, our staff actually, because they watch the Facebook and read the newspaper, they actually said the same thing, that, you know, and one of our employees who's still employed with us, actually, one year that, they did send the ambulance down here for New Year's Eve, which we had forgotten, EMS captain trouble had forgotten, I had forgotten about that we had set one up. He said, well, that was a disaster. You know, we had a call, and then we couldn't get to it. It just was a waste, because we ended up having to call the crew that was back. That's when we only had one crew on duty. The second crew came in on overtime. They had called that ambulance to come up here anyway. So they, they, you know, and they've got experience. We listen to them, and they've got experience. And again, go back to the study. It's only 503 feet from the first barricade to the firehouse. So to put the additional crew on at the station, listen to where the call is, where the 911 center tells them to go, they can pick routes. I will tell you, Ice Ice Berlin. You could not get anything up Paltan Avenue. So they need to leave the firehouse. They, and they know that. Our staff, you know, they know. They'll go out Cedar or Franklin, come around 113, come back in, or they got to go 113 to get to South Main, or come back up William Street, Pitt Street, Bay Street, come back in town. So it's just, it's our best practice as, like how Mr. Burrell put it, it's our professional expertise. That's what you hire us to do, as you did, hire us through the contract. And that's, and we can agree to disagree, but that's our professional expertise. That's why we elected EMS captain. And we're glad to provide it. I will share with you exactly what the mayor said. Email asked for an estimate of New Year's Eve. We provided an estimate based on who signed up. They're still on the schedule, but we're, need to be removing them from the schedule if the town's not going to be reimbursing us, because that's a nine-hour overtime for two people. The other, we kept it on as, I called it the right thing to do, and we were down to the wire. We didn't get that email until 23 minutes after 5:00 on Friday. We tried to be fair to our employees.
But in full transparency, we did have a conversation the day before, where it was clearly communicated.
Yep. So, so that's where we are. So there's no change to professional expertise of the officers of EMS corporation, the operational officer, consulting staff. And of course, we do include the fire operational officer, and the study is, we respond from the firehouse.
I, I'm speaking for Jack. You know, I do respect your professional opinion. I read this, reread the study and notated what that said. But I think it goes back to a year or two ago. You had brought to us, as I believe, a capital proposal, one of the, I don't know, I call it a football cart, but the emergency personnel cart?
A utility vehicle.
A utility vehicle.
A small utility vehicle for transporting patients and that kind of situation.
Yeah, so I mean, it seems to be, and everybody knows my other had it. I mean, that seems logical that the ambulance is at the station, and if we had this cart, it could be at the event or events. So I guess my, my logical next question would be, do you have an updated quote on that?
Wasn't asking for it. And I don't mean to be rude about that, but it's, we, year after year after year, that's the first thing that gets cut.
But we do have a number for that.
Just to play it for us.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's also been provided by our police department. So it's the same type of vehicle that they would like.
Well, it would not be the same as a police department vehicle, so.
Well, the one that we've had.
So the equip, the vehicle may be the same.
Right.
But the equipment, the medical equipment, and I don't know, again, I don't want to make comparisons to what I haven't seen. But for EMS, you want it to be a passenger vehicle that can hold at least three other people than the driver. There's most, all the time, a family member that is there. You don't want to leave them. What if you have a child? So it needs to, it needs to have four to five people, and it needs to be climate-controlled. So I don't know what the police department gave you a quote. But we can certainly update those. We work very closely now, because the county has a procurement officer with Mr. Rice. He can pull up for us any state bid contracts on any of these devices. Sourcewell Contracts, which is a nationwide bidding company. And we'll provide you, if you want it earlier than FY25 budget, we can do that maybe within the next 30 days. I'll call Mr. Rice tomorrow, get him to start assisting me and.
I mean, this is a work session, and I'm interested in it. I don't know what.
I am as well.
But get the price.
It doesn't hurt to have the number. I mean, it took, just to keep it in perspective, we, it took probably, Kate might even know, five, seven years of bringing an AV system up, cutting, bringing an AV system up, cutting. I mean, to RJ, to your point, yeah, it's disheartening, but sometimes we have to make those decisions. And I'm not here to tell you that if you bring the number up, that we're going to be able to fund it. But it is helpful to have that in our, in our.
I'm a little confused there. So you would have that downtown with personnel staff, correct?
Right, because, and the reason for that, not the ambulance, if that's downtown, that's very movable and all that. And just like the study said, they would load up the injured or ill person and take them 503 feet past the last barricade to the ambulance.
Right.
And then they, they could either transfer that to the on-duty crew, or for continuity of care, those people may jump on the ambulance, and then the other crew working, get on the utility vehicle and come back to restate.
So without that vehicle, how do you get from the firehouse to downtown to treat patients? Let's say there's an event at Ice, at the football job.
We try, we try our best to get to the area where responding, we're not downtown stuck in traffic, like the paramedics explained, the time we did come downtown, they were stuck, couldn't get around. We do the best we can, the best lay plans, you're a planner, the best lay plans, we're going to park it in front of X, we're going to put cones up, it won't be blocked in, yada, yada.
Somebody moves the cones.
Somebody moves the cones, somebody's going to get a drink, you know. And, and this is nothing different than anything else. You go to Ocean City and look, they've got the ambulances outside the perimeter, even at Sun Fest, Spring Fest, they're not within that perimeter. They're out there behind the ice cream place. They're outside the perimeter. The, the, mostly events now, I've talked to Ocean City chief, they're not even staffing them. They're making the companies get private, corporations private first aid. Now, they come, just like us, if you, you all decided it's better off to get Joe's first, and I apologize for the Joe, but a Joe's first aid company to come sit downtown with a first aid bag and want to respond first and then call us, that's fine. But that's not anything insulting to us. That, that's common practice. We also do this for other things, Councilmember, the event for the SU, the Seagull Century, we know where that route is, but those people stay at the firehouse. Because, again, we don't know where it's going to be. We don't know what equipment they need.
That's very spread out.
That's very spread out.
That's very spread out.
But, but that's just our, you know, we'll go back. So I guess to summarize, we will, I'll say 30 days, get you that. I'll work with Mr. Rice. I'll work with the EMS officers to get the document up here and cycle, you know, any contracts that we can get. I will throw this suggestion out there, and I don't want to throw somebody under the bus here, but maybe Director Wells could look at something. They have all these economic development grants and stuff, event grants, maybe she can look for a grant.
The one that Senator Van Hollen sent over, if you don't believe it's a fit, it would be a very good fit for this type of vehicle.
We can certainly look at that.
Because I can see where you all may say no to that funding, but it does put more advantageous grant applications or partnerships, which a partnership here could be easily the town and the fire and EMS. So I think there's a way to fund it, to Councilmember Ors's point. I do want to clarify that you do agree that if that vehicle was in play, onsite EMS services would be something we could expect.
Yes, because that vehicle allows that smaller footprint to be downtown.
So maybe what we do is we advance the $8,000 as the first point in that funding. It gets us closer to where we need to be.
So we do have the outstanding matter of New Year's Eve, though, right? Word of that's a right now.
Well, right now, as, as of right now, we hit a disagreement. The best practice is to have, as David mentioned, even Ocean City with the outside first folks providing EMS coverage, that is a best practice to have it onsite. We didn't come up with that out of left field. That was out of the emergency pre-planning based off of certain events from our police department. And the recommendation by the police department was onsite EMS services, because it's a best practice.
So yeah.
So in order to get us there, we're hearing that the fire company says, hey, look, putting an ambulance there may not be the best play. So then let's work towards the vehicle. And we've got $8,000, maybe we move that as our first step to funding it. So.
Then for New Year's Eve, you have somebody scheduled.
No, no, they don't.
Well, yeah, I said, we've not removed it from the schedule.
Well, that, that is on, that is your all scheduling stuff, because we have been very clear about, we have been very clear about the onsite.
In fairness, we want, I'm just going to put out, we want to wait until the work session, in case somebody changes their mind. I just go throw it out there.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I think that to hit the best practice, I think the way that we can do that is probably take that full amount and put it towards the capital equipment that you need to be able to get there.
That's fine. Tomorrow morning, we will tell the people their overtime's been canceled.
But I mean, in full transparency, we had that discussion how many weeks ago?
Well, we're not going to argue it. I just was very honest with you two, Zach, and said, we want to wait in case somebody changes their mind. It's easier to tell, remove somebody from the schedule than remove them and try to get them back on.
I think that's, is this?
If you all have a change in.
And I don't mean any disrespect, but you sit here, and I have no disrespect toward Chief Arnold, but you sit here and you say, well, you know, the police's recommendation is put an ambulance. I don't recommend where cops need to park for fire calls.
And they did not, they did not recommend anything other than saying that in the emergency planning, in full transparency, in the emergency planning for town events, we recommend, based off of the best practice, having EMS onsite. That was the, and they identified the events at which they recommended those services.
And with our current situation, current equipment that we have to operate out of, that was not practical for us.
And we're hearing that. Yeah, we're, we're hearing that. So.
It's kind of like we're so close, but we're so far as far as the distance of the building.
It's just we want to keep building to it. Like, if you tell us you're going to build a nine-story building, the chief would have to tell you, the ladder truck's not going to reach you.
But to your point, RJ, like, the, the item had been cut. So let's say it's a $40,000 vehicle. We're almost 25% there. And I think that's reasonable to say, hey, look, especially if we're going to apply for a grant, if we say we have $8,000 in matching funds, we're requesting $30-something thousand dollars, puts us in a bit more favorable spot to actually receive that fund.
So I just have a question about that. Because at one point, they were talking about RFP for services for events, right?
Well, we want to get toward how, we want to meet the identified pre-planning. That's the best, best way to do it, right? The police department has said, based off of the volume of people that attend certain events, and that list has been provided to the council as well as the fire company. These are the ones that we recommend having onsite EMS services for. We agree that that, I think we can all agree that at that level, we should have some form of EMS services. Now, the only point that we disagree with is you all say that you can't meet that with your current equipment. And we're hearing that. And we're saying, how can we help get us to where we need to be? And I think that's where we're at.
Right, I think so too. I just, the RFP concern me because, and I saw this at Ocean City's call, the music festival, they had the paramedics that came in, they treated them, stabilized them, we'll call it, in the middle of the crowd.
That's good.
Got them out, and then OC Fire Department is there at the boundary to take them out. So I think that's the only, I just want to make sure everyone was aware of that, you know, if we do outsource this to Joe's or Life Star or something else, it's just onsite treatment.
But that is the best.
It's still good at that.
But that's still the way that this would be handled. The crew that's stationed for the event would not transport the patient, more than likely. They would hand off care to a unit that would transport.
Well, because they would need to stay on-site.
Right. They're not transporting in that type of vehicle.
So I just, you know, just, so as a business owner, just that you all paid for a fee, paid for something that you didn't need, or well, wasn't justified, I guess, in a way that you had to pay out dollars to a third shift, right? So with the New Year's Eve shift, unless there's four folks here, you know, disagree with that, would you be able to not pay that individual at this point in time?
That, that costs as well, over, you had an estimate, well over 1,000 hours, and that, that needs to.
So that individual's not expected to be paid.
Two individuals. It was, it was a dedicated crew.
But no, in full transparency, you quoted, even in the quotes for those events, you gave us the highest number.
$155.
We were willing to pay the highest number. The only disagreement we had was the placement of apparatus. And with that, we did, even though you had sent an email saying you want to know closed business, I think the email was sent to you following our phone conversation at like 5: something in the evening. But in full transparency, you and I had several phone calls leading up to that, where we were both very clear.
We must have done 15 times.
Right, yeah, but we were both, I, I think it was well-known before you even sent the email where the town's position was.
But in fairness, like I said, we left it on there till tonight, in case somebody changes.
And that's understandable, but we've been clear on, at least administratively, where our.
So we need to move up to something. Either just, if, if the decision is the same, there ought to be two crews available on December 31.
That was just one of the, I just think it's very.
If you all change.
Make sure you're not paying.
If there's an accident, both medicures are gone.
But that's, but it's always been that way, too. Like, we've wanted to make, we want to make it better, and we're trying to figure out how we can make it better.
Right.
And I think we're all on that same page.
We'll just get the card.
We need Jack's golf card.
Yeah, we need the golf, the football card.
We'll work on it next, like I said, send an email at Friday night to Mr. Rice, and we'll start working on it.
Before you, don't we have an outstanding matter that was delayed from last Monday's meeting?
It's on my list. We need to talk about.
Yeah, sorry.
I didn't mean to pack you up there.
That's okay.
I have, I have ARPA funds and then one other item I'd like to broach with the group. Let's start with the item that's probably not going to take as long. Town Administrator Mary Boland, in her experience, has worked with federal entities that provide reimbursement to fire EMS services when they respond to certain federal locations. The one piece of, one request, and then maybe a piece of advice that we have, is if you haven't already, maybe start having a conversation with the Federal Park Service and the State Park Service about reimbursing also for some of the runs that you handle down there. There's always already stuff in play, and we can assist with that if you would like, that maybe you could use for those types of reimbursement.
And you can just send us the information so we can make sure we can evaluate.
So to date, you probably. So to date, you probably haven't had any conversations about funding.
Uh, there, there's, I'd have to find, I know there's an old aside, uh, very old, it's like, yeah, but dating back to nineteen ninety-nine, there was an agreement, response agreement assigned with the National Park Service, uh, when the rescue truck was purchased. And then I do know that they provided some funding when the, uh, brush truck, uh, was, was purchased.
But nothing for med, I mean, you run a substantial amount of medical calls too.
Yeah, yeah, um, I don't know, substantial. I don't know what the numbers, even give you an estimate, but we'll, we'll look at that. Yeah, send us the information.
It's more than one or two though, right? Like.
More than two.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You run some calls for service to the island.
Send us the information, and we'll, we'll have to get our EMS billing company involved because we gotta make sure we're not double-dipping, or one doesn't just qualify the other, you know, collecting money from one and doesn't.
I think it would be more like the formula you have already with the county. So as long as it mimics something like that, if the county's formula doesn't make it prohibitive, then I don't see why this would. So.
Forward, forward it to us. I'll get Mr. Burton and billing company and whoever else needs looking. And we're lucky we have, you know, a, a long-time employee of Park Service, someone who are firing EMS company.
All right, next item's ARPA. And, what's the chuckle?
Well, two just wanted to do it.
Okay, so ARPA, um, the way that the contract reads is that it says for a qualifying project, it was originally identified, we, we reached the two-twenty threshold with, uh, wanting to help the fire company achieve their replacement of SCBA. Um, you all have an alternative funding path for that. That's great. We, we really think that's a good thing. Uh, but we still have that money available for the fire company. The request is for principal and interest payment for.
No, principal, no, I said any money interest.
Okay, so a prin, a principal payment that will cut your interest payment by what? Ten thousand dollars?
They give me, they've given me an estimate of ten thousand. Of course, as you all know, it depends on what day that payment is received and how it's received.
When do you begin paying on the note?
We've already started.
We've already started.
What's the total amount?
A hundred and thirty-something dollars.
One thirty-six.
I would be careful quoting the pennies because I think there's a discrepancy. But I, I think that.
Two hundred thousand.
I think we can figure that out.
If you could use a portion of that to buy that utility vehicle.
Or Hearst tools, or, there's a number of things.
Yeah. So, so we can flip-flop money if you're telling us, so I guess the.
Well, you have a need for equipment and this utility part.
So, well, that would be EMS, so that wouldn't be fire company. So, so the contract says for the fire company. So we can flip-flop money. So I guess the, the question is this, from talking to the lawyer and the captain, if you're officially telling us that fire apparatus is not a qualifying project, we will submit an alternative project.
We've never said that. And the thing is, is that.
We don't need to talk any further. That's, that's the stage of the question. I'll catch you off, Mayor.
We're not saying that.
Okay, then if it's not, distribute the funds per the contract. Let's move on.
Well, we're not saying that either. What we're saying is, is that we want, we're all working toward a funding formula. And that, I think you had referenced at the beginning of the meeting, that the one thirty-six gets us to where we kinda need to be for funding the, the capital for FY twenty-four. That's what you said in the very beginning. So I think in a way of understanding what those capital costs might be, what we're gonna be looking at funding, I think that my recommendation to the group, and I'll, I'll say to you all as well, was to wait until we have the numbers burned up. It seems like we have fire, we don't have EMS, we're working toward a funding formula. Still puts us well within FY twenty-four for hopefully making a decision. But, I mean, we're not, at least, I'm not a no. I, I don't have a vote in the matter, but I can say from the town's perspective, we're not a no for giving you the funds. We're just trying to figure out what the best way would be and how that looks for future fiscal years. Does that make sense?
So one of the discussion points the other night was an MOU. And I asked you at the meeting, um, what the feeling, why MOU? So I wanted to ask that again. Um, why do you feel like the MOU is needed for producing these funds?
Well, it's a twofold thing. So if we're funding capital and we're lumping capital together in a funding formula, then do I think an MOU is needed? No, I don't. But if we're funding fire apparatus, these two pieces of apparatus, an engine and a rescue truck, I do think we should have an MOU if it's just for those pieces of apparatus, just for that note. But if we're lumping capital together, then no, I don't, to your point and to my comment the other night, I don't think an MOU is needed. Do you?
No.
But I think that if we're gonna fund a specific piece of equipment to the tune of a hundred and something thousand dollars a year, an MOU should be prudent. Does that make sense?
I don't see that. I don't see what's, what's the difference. I mean, still, I'll go with capital, correct?
Well, no, because the request is explicitly for two pieces of apparatus. What we're saying in the funding form, that's the request. What we're saying with the funding formula is that we would be lumping rope, Hearst tools, other pieces of equipment altogether under one fixed cost. And for that, I don't think each one needs an MOU. But if we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars a year on two pieces of apparatus, those two pieces of apparatus, if that's just where the funding is going, we should have an MOU in place. So the life cycle of that equipment.
One-time release of ARPA funds.
What's that?
This is a one-time release of the remaining ARPA funds.
That's what we're talking, that's what the request is for. And the current request is for two pieces of apparatus to play, pay one principal payment.
You said two pieces. I thought it was just a payment on the, the fire truck.
So.
What is the rescue truck and the interest? We have one, we have one loan for two pieces of apparatus.
Those are the two pieces of apparatus that we're discussing. And the MOU, in my understanding, and this is why I thought it made sense, cause if we go back to when we were discussing the parts where if we didn't, if we only got to this much of funding after a certain date, then, uh, Berlin fired EMS, we no longer will be able to provide services for the town of Berlin. That's where, that's where we were last year, when we didn't, if we didn't reach a certain place. So my thought was, and this is why I thought the MOU made sense, if we're, if this funding is going to these specific two pieces of apparatus, when we're talking MOU and those kinds of things, it kinda sorta puts us in a place where, and I'm not, I would never be one to try to cut you off of what you necessarily need, but at the same time, at the end of the day, our priority is to the health, welfare and safety of this town of Berlin. You see what I'm saying? That's where my thought was the MOU was like, well, this does make sense. Because if we're supposed to be sitting here representing this, the, the people that make up Berlin, and you're saying to me that if we don't cover this much money, that they don't get this service anymore, how are we, how are we being fair to those folks by not putting something in place to at least to sit, make sure that they're getting what we're putting, what we're paying for? Do you understand what I'm saying?
So I'm a little confused with the MOU part of it. I'm not exactly sure with the MOU. I mean, we sign an annual contract with you, with the town overall, saying, we're providing this service. It is our, you know, with, with the money that we agree upon and is written in the contract, we're gonna provide a service, we're gonna make sure equipment is available. What's the MOU with?
Henry already authorized this money for capital purposes.
Right, and approved capital. But now I think also to help satisfy Councilmember Nichols' point is, if we get to a formula, I don't think there's a need for a contract anymore. Do you agree? Or do you, do you think that it's prudent to still have a contract?
I don't think, I'm in a position to answer that. That's up to the membership.
Well, you don't, I think also, do you have a contract with the county? You have a formula?
It's a charter and a written, uh, you know, written document.
There's something that binds that cause. So if we had a similar thing in place, committing to a formula, that should satisfy the cause, like the service, I think.
It'd be a longer-term agreement. Yeah, this'll be afforded to, just like, until you change the charter and stuff.
So the MOU, to your point, would be that we would not be obligated to your debt. So if you forfeit the debt, we're not responsible for that.
Right.
But that's why we don't wanna be on the title. But an MOU would say that while that piece of equipment's in service, it would have to be used for fire, or fire services within Berlin and Worcester County and your new toy. It's not anything more than that.
I don't see the need.
That's where I was like, MOU.
I, I don't really see the need to do that.
The MOU at all? Or in that sense?
Well, first of all, an, an MOU is a memorandum of understanding. It's not a contract.
Right.
So it's really not enforceable.
And, and, uh, I just picked up on something to not interrupt. That, this helps with the conversation. You're gonna be responsible for the debt anyway.
Right, yeah, we have, we have no, yeah, I, there's no.
I think as a, as a matter of due diligence, you guys have signed a note. We'd like, I, I think we need to see what you got going on.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's what I said with the documents. We'll, we'll provide the proof, even have a loan, the canceled check, front and back copy, just because we know, just like with the, uh, cardiac monitors on EMS side, we know, as Mr. Lays says, and we know through the county, that those federal funds, we're over, everybody's over the limit. It's gonna be that single-source audit that you've all had to put in your budget. So this, this is good. Instead of fourteen thousand, a piece of rope and axes and everything, you, you're gonna have a document that says, here's the loan, here's the sub-grantee, which is Berlin market, we paid, front, back of the check. Do you wanna see the, uh, what, what was paid? You can drive down to two fourteen North Main Street and look at a big truck, or two big trucks, and say they're here, and.
But I think the group is less, and correct me if I'm wrong, councilmembers, but I think we're less inclined in future years to say, how much rope do you need? What Hearst tools do you need? How many ladders need to be replaced? We, we're not really into all of that. We wanna get to a number that is satisfying your capital needs.
Right. And that's the two hundred and one fifty. So, so, and they're two, so they're two separate things. So, so, you know, get us past ARPA, if down the road, whatever you want with the one fifty, if that's a certain accounting practice that needs to be paid to show you the capital went to one fifty, is what we've done before. Uh, if you go back, the website's not accurate, but if you go back to those years where it's all lumped in, there says it's four hundred thousand, it's not. It's, uh, some for EMS and it's some for capital and all that. And we did that, did. Go back and look at your records. We, we showed that we bought a ladder truck. We got a hundred twenty thou, we showed that we bought ambulance, and we had to give all that to this, uh, the previous town administrator, Mr. Carter.
Laura.
So, so, yeah, Ms. Allen. Uh, so, so we, you know, as I said in the letter, we, we know, we don't ask you for things that you don't.
The mayor's saying is, we just wanna simplify this whole process. So you're not saying, oh, we broke today, we need this tomorrow, we need that. We don't need to hear all that. We really don't.
We just give you that chart and.
Yeah.
To show you.
That's a new formula. Yeah, that's a great idea.
And that's why we deal with this ARPA. That's why we, we're talking with the membership. And, and it's a simple thing. Cause if you, we can switch money all around, but then town hospital has eighteen receipts. Hey, federal office, can I see this, can I see this piece of rope?
Yeah, but just, just so that we're, I mean, just so that we're clear, if, if you had made the request, when you made the request for, uh, principal, for your equipment, if it had been for the SCBA, you would've had that money by now. Just so that you know that, like, because that's what we had the conversation about. And that's how we had to reach the two-twenty level of funding. Now what we're doing is, we're not saying that we don't wanna give you the money. We're just saying, we wanna make sure that it's in an agreeable spot.
So by January, at the council meeting on January eighth, can we have a motion?
What's the motion for?
To release the.
To release the funding.
For what?
Yep. So, 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 so we'll, we'll give you a topic that prove that we've ordered the vehicles and that we have a loan for the vehicle.
And you're sure that's what you wanna use?
Yes. It's gonna make things so much simpler for us accounting-wise, especially with this federal audit. Cause I, as I just stepped through it, boom, boom, one check, just like the heart monitors, one check, front, back, here's the bill, come down, the auditor wants to come look at it, and they drive down, look at three heart monitors.
What's the deliverable date for appointment?
It's on there, January twenty-fifth.
January twenty-fifth.
And, oh, it's twenty-twenty-five.
September.
September.
Of next year?
Twenty-twenty-five. So it well meets, and we have told the vendors, both the finance and the manufacturer, that there's ARPA funds, just like we have with our ambulance, city county ARPA funds. And we're nowhere near the twenty-twenty-six. No, no chance of that being delayed. Not like the ARPA.
Now, if it's going for the specific, that's what I'm hearing, is that you wanted to go specifically to the apparatus?
Yeah.
And you don't think an MOU is prudent?
I mean, if you have a written request.
Well, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna see a copy of your note.
And, and the contract that we bought the truck.
Well, that's, that's not the, that's not the.
Could we write, could we write the check right to your, your lender?
Yeah, but that's not the reason for the MOU. The reason for the MOU is to address Councilmember Nichols' point of equipment being used to serve Berlin regardless of.
Where else would it be?
Can I just jump in? But that's our contract already, since we have to serve the town.
We already have the MOU. That's, I mean, I understand where the mayor's coming from.
I'm, I'm only asking a question.
No, I, but I understand where you're coming from. And the, we have the MOU, which is what we, we all signed, you know?
That's a contract.
Our contract.
Okay.
Difference.
In the contract, though, it says that we will use the ARPA funds we're talking about for approved, I don't remember, verbatim, approved capital expenses.
I have a ready year.
So you've said the capital expense that you want to use it for is for the new apparatus.
But my question is not about that. My question is that that contract covers through FY twenty-four, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Councilmember Nichols' point was, what was raised last budget cycle, was if there's not funding available, we're not seeing that as likely. But if we can't reach terms for a cost of service, the statement that was made is that town service may be impacted by that. And Councilmember Nichols' point is if we fund fire apparatus, two pieces of equipment, hundred and thirty-something thousand dollars, and we can't reach an agreement for FY twenty-five.
Then it's not.
What happens to that piece of equipment?
Exactly.
And my question to the town attorney is, don't you think if we're gonna release funds, as Councilmember Green had asked, January eighth, that we have an MOU in play for those two pieces of apparatus that we're getting ready to front fund this?
What would the MOU say?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not following the point because, because if we're.
It's not, not.
So what, what you're saying is that if we don't come to an agreement for service, and they insist on being paid for service and billing the town for services, what, what you all had said you were, you were intending to do last year, that they'd still have to use those two pieces of equipment to provide service, even though we don't have an agreement for them to provide service?
Well, to Councilmember Nichols' point, it's, it's saying that if we're.
Well, my thought is, if you can't come to an understanding as to where service is still gonna be provided, and we're paying directly for these specific two pieces of equipment, why would you wanna put the money towards those two pieces of equipment if you can't guarantee that those pieces of equipment will be used here because we can't come to an understanding as to if they're gonna continue to provide service for us enough? That's the question that has been brought up. Why would you do that if this comes up again, not even this calendar year, but if it's, what if it's two years from now, or five years from now, when they're still funding these two pieces of equipment that we just put money towards, and it, and it said, and it stated, we're not, we haven't come to a, we haven't come to an impasse. We're not happy. We haven't, you haven't provided what we're asking for, and we can't provide what you're asking for. And you say, we're not providing services for the town at this point because you have to do whatever. That's what happened last year. Am I wrong? Isn't that where we came to?
That's what this.
So that's where the question comes from as to, if you're putting funding specifically towards those two things rather than capital per se, do you want, is that what you want to do? That's the question.
But you have to keep in mind that, um.
I mean, that's.
I'm not an accountant, but I'm certain that every piece of equipment you have, in some shape or form, the town has given you money to purchase this.
Right, right. And I'm not, I'm not.
Going back a lot.
I'm not saying I don't want to put money towards this, but this is the question that's asked, and that's why I bring it up.
And the only thing I'm saying is that by getting to a funding formula, I want it to be less about, hey, we provided funding for these two pieces of apparatus, and more toward, we provided this much in capital, you manage it.
Right, right.
That's where we wanna get to. You all are asking for it today, and we're saying, the town's position is, let's just try to get to where we are, so we're clear on what we're doing. And whether the town says, hey, look, we wanna release the funding, backdate it for FY twenty-four, or whether we want to use a portion or some other, uh, funding mechanism. Only thing I've ever said to the group is, let's just get it straight so we know what we're doing.
And I think the uniqueness about this, so, so I think we are sort of mixing two things here, because this is grant funds and it's gotta be all accounted for. The, the here, because this is grant funds, and it's got to be all accounted for, the 150 down the road, like you said, lumping stuff all together and all that, but, but this, you want to make it simple, because again, the federal.
But it, it doesn't prohibit us from saying that we want to provide capital funding, and the funding formula could.
Different thing.
No, no, it's not, David, it's the same thing, because you're saying from a accounting standpoint, if we can look at the formula and say, it went to fire capital, these items, this is how we arrived at the amount, that substantiates the, the grant funding for the